It is. I'll call this meeting to order. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Has a roll call been taken? All right. We have before us the consent calendar, which is the City Commission Meeting Minutes of July 8th, the Police Department Monthly Report, June 2025, and the May Finance Report for this year. Is there any amendments, adjustments, changes to the agenda? Or is there a motion to accept the consent calendars presented?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded Mitchell Salacio to approve the consent calendars presented. All those in favor say aye. All's opposed. Motion carries. Next, we have the badge pinning and oath of office for Officer Blanton. Chief Workman?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. All right. So, Officer Blanton, stand up here. Okay, you have to stand here while I read a bunch of stuff. Uh, okay, so excited to bring on a new officer. And we're still only, we're now just one person down still with the retirement of someone leaving us shorthanded again. So we are endeavoring to replace that, but Officer Blanton has joined us so to fill in one of those spots. Um, so, uh, I always read this about the origin of the police badge and how the police badge became such an icon. So, uh, James has chosen to have his girlfriend Bella Byers come up and pin him, and I'll read this while she's pinning the badge on. And Jim's going to be our photographer, so I'm still putting him to work, even though he doesn't work for me anymore. All right, badges date back to the medieval times when knights wore a coat. You're just gonna have to stand like this so Jim can get a picture of you. Coat of arms representing their allegiances and loyalty. The first idea of a badge was created long before modern law enforcement. The badge eventually became an identifier and of authority among public servants, thus leading to the way police officers distinguished their rank. There are several theories on how the police badge evolved into what it is today. However, some historians speculate the first badge came from London England around 1845. The police badge has become the most recognizable icon for law enforcement officers. It is a tool to identify the officer from which department they come. Police badges come in many shapes, sizes, colors, and materials. As we hear in a moment, "An officer of the law takes an oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and to faithfully enforce the laws of the United States and to enforce the laws as well as those in their town, city, state, and federal agency where they are employed." They also swear to never tarnish the badge. Although a law enforcement badge may seem like only a simple portrayal of position and authority, it represents the willingness to sacrifice one's own safety to assist others. It is a symbol and a promise to uphold the best interests of their community within their position. Go ahead, Bella. And I told James he needs to be on Bella's good side because when she's putting this on, she could really jam it in if she wanted to. All right. So, uh, real quickly, um, I'll give you an update before the mayor comes up and, or a background on James before the mayor comes up and does the oath. Uh, James was born in Arizona and later moved to Oregon, graduating from Astoria High School. Won't hold that against him. Uh, attended Klatsepp Community College where he majored in criminal justice. He's previously worked for the Astoria Police Department before coming to the Warrenton Police Department. James and Bella, who you just met, purchased a home in Hammond recently, and Bella has also attended CCC and is a dispatcher, excuse me, for the Astoria 911 Center. Uh, James has already graduated from DPSST Academy and is currently completing his FTEP program here with the WPD, and that will be going on for the next several weeks. Now, James will take the oath of office with the mayor.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the Constitution and laws of the State of Oregon, the laws and ordinances of the City of Warrenton, and the rules and regulations of the Warrenton Police Department, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties of the office to which you've been appointed in and for the City of Warrenton according to law and to the best of your ability? Congratulations.
You guys go over away from the podium and so we get a clean picture of the other company.
There you go. All right. Welcome aboard.
I don't know if the chief told you though, but now you're required to give a 15-minute dissertation on your duties. No, I'm just kidding. All righty. No, seriously, welcome aboard. It's, we're glad to have you. Yeah, if, uh, if you were here just for Officer Blanton, um, you're welcome to stay. But if you're here, no one's gonna be offended if you leave. I know the rest of it's not as exciting as that, so.
Congratulations.
All righty. Next, we have Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Poe?
Nothing for me tonight.
Salacio?
Um, two things. Last week, Commissioner Mitchell and I both attended the COAD, which is the Klatsepp Community Organizations Active in Disaster. And this is a, a countywide initiative for disaster preparedness. It was the first meeting that I'd gone to. Jen Munson with the county organizes it, and if you'd like more information or to be involved, her email is jmunson@klatseppcounty.gov. One thing that we talked about was actually doing a fire alarm campaign to make sure people's fire alarms have batteries that are functioning property. This is probably something the chief can speak to a little bit more, but the risk when you don't have a functioning fire alarm and, um, that's just one, I think, low-hanging fruit where we could have significant community impact. And it was just great to see people from across county coming up with ideas on how to be better prepared, as we saw with, you know, some of the national events recently. The best thing that we can do is prepare in advance for any type of emergency. Um, and then today we had the Klatsepp Economic Development Resources, uh, meeting. There is an upcoming event at Fort George on Thursday, August 21st. It's the Big Bash for Small Business, and we actually have two Warrenton businesses that are going to be there. Arnie's, Crystal Green from Arnie's will be there, and then Nicole will be on from Frolic and Lark will also be there. And that'll be an opportunity to learn more about the SBDC resources that are available, network with other businesses, and just really strengthen the business community. And I think I'm gonna try to plan to go, so it'd be great to see other folks there. We also discussed, um, you might have seen in the Astorian that Providence was one of the hospitals listed as being at risk for potential closure as part of the recent federal legislation. And they actually said, you know, they've been cutting costs recently, so things might look a little bit different, but they'll keep the community up to date as things progress. And they are the county's third-largest employer, so it would be devastating if something happened to them, but just wanted to make, make everyone aware that that was discussed today as well. So, that's all I've got.
Thank you. Commissioner Mitchell?
Yeah, I'll just piggyback on that a little bit. There's also, uh, they're moving throughout the county, specifically came to Warrenton because of the fact that every city has unique emergencies that happen in their community that are, you know, different than other cities. Ours, of course, is the only city on the coast that has both the river to deal with and the ocean and the levees that we deal with. Our issues, one of them differently than, say, that Cannon Beach or, or somewhere else in the community. So they're visiting from, uh, different cities throughout the county each month. I thought it was pretty interesting, uh, to meet with all these different organizations throughout the whole county. Also, on the Saturday, September 13th, they are doing a county sheltering community basic training. So anyone who's interested in learning about your organization or wishing to learn about how you can be involved with shelter training during emergency in which you can do volunteer part of that stinking place at Cannon Beach Community Center. And at times it can be done by, uh, announced. It's being done by the American Red Cross. And, um, it, it, we got to get on September 13th. Uh, follow that up. Uh, we met with Spruce Up. Spruce Up, of course, uh, had been able to order, uh, the new decorations for Christmas. It will go across the screen, who we found at Oregon, a business here in town who was all interior to put them up for us. And, uh, so we're really pleased to have, see that getting paid care. Unfortunately, the ball festival's not gonna happen this year. They're short of manpower, although it's become a really successful event. It just doesn't have the manpower to continue. They do plan within the fiscal year to put together a, um, a, uh, a community, Warrenton Community Event, and, uh, that'll probably happen. Probably, as they're looking probably closer to, to springtime of, of '27. They are desperate to be the volunteers. If you've ever thought about joining an organization, like if you fall to an organization in town, they are down to four board members who are doing most of the work. I want, I want to point something out that I neglected to say at the last meeting. And that's a special thank you to Dan Arnaud for his work during the Fourth of July. He's done this year after year after year after year. And if you're there, you've been there, he's the one that's telling everybody who has a quote has anything to do with lining up for that parade, which should have been in order. And he's did an amazing job, and I want to thank Dan for that. But it is Spruce Up that the city has relegated responsibilities to, uh, putting that together. And so you have to thought about being involved, that would be a good organization for you to think about being a part of.
Awesome. City Manager?
Uh, yeah, a couple of things. Our, all of our, our staff have been hard at work this summer, but our Public Works especially have been working on the community garden. We're very close to setting a ribbon cutting. I hope to have that announced either at or before the next meeting for the commission, and then also they've been putting up the new trail signs as well. Those are just about completed. And we expect to do a ribbon cutting for that as well very soon. So both of those will probably be happening in August. I just don't have the date yet. Uh, but we're getting, we'll get that out and announced pretty quickly here. Um, and then I also wanted to remind all of you, we will be having a, a new website rolled out by the end of this year. Uh, we did hire a, a company, and, uh, we are in the process of getting that update going. Um, and then, uh, the other thing I wanted to mention, um, the community grants is a new process this year. And we do have a, uh, subcommittee that's going to be working on that, that this week. I believe we had, um, five, if I remember right, five, uh, grantees that applied, so.
All right, great. Um, the only thing I have to add is that, um, we had a board meeting with Oregonius for Flood Plane Protection, and, um, there is an extension again on, um, settlement agreement. So FEMA has not really frankly been very responsive, and that's partly because they've been de-resourced. Um, the, uh, good news is that there is, uh, some direction from the administration to make National Marine Fisheries Service be, uh, come to the table maybe possibly. It hasn't been directly stated, but it's been indirectly pretty much suggested that they should be involved, um, with the settlement agreements. If we can't reach a settlement and, uh, the, there's another lawsuit that's going forward now, uh, which is for the, um, NEDC suit. So the NEDC suit is about that FEMA is not implementing the biopsy soon enough. And that's coming for a conference settlement here in October, early October. And that'll be interesting. It's the same judge, different cases. And then, of course, our suit is mostly related to challenging the biopsy validity and, um, the implementation and the process they use to do so. We expect that the draft environmental impact statement is going to be released sometime on or about Labor Day. Um, and then from there, uh, it will be, uh, implementation. Whether or not FEMA has the money to put forward implementations, another story. But we're already hearing from some property owners, um, that can't, based on whatever their cities or counties adopted, that can't, um, develop their properties already due to either Pick'ems being adopted or, um, due to issues with getting biologists to sign off on a statement and saying there's no impacts. Um, and it's not necessarily that there isn't any impacts that can't be stated. It's mostly that biologists aren't willing, for some reason, to take on the liability of saying that an endangered species someday, somewhere, might not show up, die up on your shoreland somewhere, or jump out of the water onto your grass and die. So, uh, I mean, that's oversimplification of it, but essentially it's been, it's been an issue. So, um, I'm hopeful. Um, but, uh, if we don't get this resolved by end of the year, or at least in a direction to where we're getting close to a signature by end of the year, I would be very concerned about, um, uh, what the midterms might cause in terms of how, uh, Congress might shift, uh, its allocations related to FEMA. So, even if FEMA does go away, and a lot of people have been saying, well, we don't need to worry about this, FEMA's going away, people can still make private suits, and there's plenty of nonprofits that are wanting to, to force the government to enforce the law. So, this, we're not out of the woods yet. So that's the, the best update I can give without giving too much of the state secrets, so to speak, on that organization. Uh, and also, uh, Commissioner Mitchell, I want to thank you for attending that. Emergency Preparedness. It sounds like, uh, Salacio went as well. I actually was talking to Jen Munson about having it in Warrenton, but unfortunately I couldn't make it. So thank you for representing the city there. Um, next, we're gonna go on to public comment. Do we have any public comment cards registered? Anything online? At the record, like none. All right, public hearings, we have none, and business items. We have the request to advertise for bids for a garbage truck. Kevin Gorman, our Public Works Director?
Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. I'm here, uh, Public Works is requesting authorization to go out to bid for a new side-loading garbage truck. We have, uh, $440,000 budgeted in, in this year's budget. And, uh, the current 2013 model has been experiencing significant amounts of mechanical failures. It's, uh, the, we have three garbage trucks. We have two larger front, front-loading garbage trucks, and then this is a, a smaller, uh, side loader. And so the, the smaller side loader is really, um, a really good piece of equipment for us to get into some of the tighter streets. Uh, so it, it makes our, our collection service a lot more efficient. Um, and I, I did want to note, um, a clerical error on page 17 in the packet. Uh, one of the bid documents said, we were going out to bid in 2012. That was from the last time we purchased one. Uh, so we'll be updating that to August 21st, 2025. And with that, I am here for any questions.
Okay, 17.
So it's a smaller.
Yeah, correct. We have, I'm not sure about the gross weights on them, but we have two that are much bigger. Correct, yeah. Exactly. Bishop Mitchell?
If we ever did decide, and I'm not saying we are, would pass it around to the video, the city is in the state, still does its own kind of play. We are deciding to, to work with a corporation or a voyage or something like that. Would they purchase the trucks from us?
Yeah, I believe the sale of assets would be included.
Purchase it knowing that that asset is still not considered.
We have had previous conversations with Recology and not necessarily discussing that, but they have indicated if, I mean, they're the closest one, but if they were, for example, one of the ones that were to go after this, they would want to, um, purchase all assets, including trucks. Yeah.
Of course, that would have to go to the voters because, yeah. So, the, um, any other questions for the Public Works Director? All right. Well, is, uh, their motion authorized the advertisement for bids for a replacement refuse truck?
Move forward with the offer.
Move forward with the bids for a refuse truck?
I'll second.
So I'm moved and seconded Mitchell Poe to authorize the, um, moving forward for the bids for a replacement refuse truck. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All's opposed. Motion carries unanimous. We'll move on to the, uh, request to award construction contract for Iredale Culvert Replacement.
Yeah, so this is, uh, this is for the Phase Two Iredale Culvert Replacement Project, and we're requesting to award, uh, to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, which was Big River Construction in the amount of $841,240. Uh, this is very close to that, uh, just below the engineer's estimate. And I think there's, let me see. Uh, this, this award is contingent upon, um, any protests or, uh, appeals that might come forward.
City Manager, you want to talk to that?
Yeah, I did want to note, uh, thank you, Kevin and Mayor. I did want to note, um, we're requesting approval of the lowest responsive bid. I did want to note, we did have one that we deemed non-responsive that is currently in the appeal process, and I do plan to issue a denial of that appeal. But, uh, we cannot execute a contract until any protests are resolved. So wanted to note that as part of this, um, process.
And just for, uh, out of curiosity, what was that, uh, non-responsive bid for? How much was it?
I don't have the total in front of me. It might be in the bid package here.
I believe it was 130,000 less than the one before you.
Gotcha, okay. But it was unresponsive, so therefore not meeting the criteria, there was a higher risk of.
It was deemed non-responsive by the city.
All right.
And what is the timeline to get that resolved, to be able to move forward with that?
There is a specific process for, um, the city manager to respond to that with, uh, either a denial or upholding of that appeal. Um, they can still, after that, of course, um, follow with, uh, further process, either through the courts or otherwise.
I believe we had another contract that had the same issue with the same contractor.
Well, I'm just asking because this could delay our ability to move forward with this project.
If, if, if that full process were to be pursued by that contractor, it could. Um, but of course, we don't know until that we go through the process.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I would, I would say that it's an open risk, um, delaying the project, and that's why we're here before you tonight.
Okay.
Um, and how much, uh, relief do you see that with Phase Two? This is gonna be the complete restructuring of, because we did Phase One, was it last year or the year before? We had the cribbing and the, the different sized culverts on the Phase One Iredale Replacement. So now that we're finishing the rest of the Iredale Culvert, how much relief or how much extra relief should Hammond residents in that area feel or see from, uh, this improved culvert? I'm just curious. Do you have an estimate on that?
I don't have an estimate. I wasn't here when we initiated this project, so I wasn't involved in the technical parts of it. But tremendous relief is kind of what I've heard, um, as far as the reducing the flooding in that area. And we wouldn't, we wouldn't put forward a, a project if we didn't believe that it had, uh, an actual value to the community.
Oh, I'm not questioning the value of it all. I'm just trying to quantify it.
I've lived in the area 30 years, just a block or two away, and when the water table comes up there, it's right to the road, and that's affecting everything around because your water table's just at the base of everybody's homes and at the roads, and a lot of times flowing over, but you know, the way they found that culvert, the shape it was in with the crush and everything, I'm sure it's gonna help a lot. And I'm also wondering about the vault. I know there's a vault right there on the old Colonel property. Is there gonna continue to be a vault there, or will it go straight through, do you think?
Um, I don't know the specifics of it again, since I wasn't here when we initiated it.
Anyway, there's like a manhole vault kind of a thing that.
I, I do know, I, I did review the, the plans before this meeting and trying to anticipate all the questions, but, um, I did see that there were, were some vaults and a, uh, a, um, a manhole maintenance hole.
In, in the last phase, when they did the emergency section, they did install a tide gate, they call it, although when we talk about tide gates, it's really like a flapper.
Yeah, right.
Um, but this is, I believe, it's supposed to at least, um, double the amount of capacity, if not triple it, if I remember correctly from the engineering. So hopefully that will relieve most of that flooding in the area.
I'm sure it's gonna help.
Those flappers don't necessarily fully close everywhere, do they?
Uh, no, they're, they're designed to remain open. I, I, I don't know how, when the water comes up, they're, they are, you know, a piece of rubber, so they, they can bend backwards and close up. But I'm not sure about the, the pressure and the loading on it on the, the backside.
Okay. How many of those do we have in the city? That's kind of a new one, isn't it?
The flapper? I don't know. I, I think the total number of tide gates that we have.
About 35, right?
Yeah, I, I'm showing 24 on this, but.
That's 24 stations, but multiple, multiple tide gates at some locations, if I remember right.
Yeah, there's not, that have multiples, but.
And there's different types, so I'm not 100% certain.
These flappers, there's, there's really not very many.
Yeah, I, my only concern is that when a high tide comes and say there's debris, which always comes with those big tides, that we have a plan in place to make sure that they stay clear.
Yeah, and that is something that I'm diving deep into as far as, uh, we just finished our levee inspection, and so there's a lot to learn for me for storm waters. I've never been in a city with, uh, as much storm water infrastructure as we have here.
Not a lot of us like that, yeah.
Uh, and it is a, you know, a significant risk to the community, so we're diving in deep into the storm water management plan, the, uh, operations maintenance plan for the, uh, levee system and all the tide gates and everything.
Okay. Well, is there any other questions?
You know, I've seen that gate at high water, and I think it's above mean or high. It isn't actually down in it, kind of sits up and will cascades in most of the time, like 99% of the time. I think, I don't know that the high water ever gets right up and pushes against that gate.
Any other further questions or comments? Is there a motion to enter into contract to the lowest responsive bidder, the Iredale Culvert Replacement Project, uh, after the appeal period?
So moved.
Moved and seconded Salacio Mitchell to enter into contract with the lowest responsive bidder, um, for the Iredale Culvert Replacement Project after the appeal period. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All's opposed. Motion carries. I'm gonna ask unanimous consent to, um, move shopping cart ordinance down, um, below B for discussion items. If that is, are there any objection?
No objection.
Hearing none, so ordered, so.
Oh.
Now, if I want to get the sergeant arms to remove you, how do, who do I, no, I'm just kidding. Yeah, all right, I guess we can deputize the Public Works. All right, we'll move on to, uh, Fire Department Safety Fees. Chief Halsbury?
Thank you, Commissioner and Mayor and City Staff for your time tonight. I have a couple of different items to present to you. The first one is, um, a public safety fee in, on May 27th, 2025, we, we met as a group. I have an opportunity for Commission to give feedback to Fire and Finance Department. Their comments and guidance, the administration, um, of, of some sort of fee and what that might look like. And I provided more, more further information that you had requested, so, um, we want to discuss that fee first. Before you, on the public's, or on the public safety fee for water meters, I've given you two different fee structures. Uh, all commercial only, uh, three-quarter inch meters all the way up to eight. And then we also, uh, provide you the numbers of each of those and what the proposed fee could generate revenue-wise. The higher, the, the bigger the meter, the more of a hazard we kind of have with those, those buildings, so we adjusted that fee to kind of fit there for amount of call volume and, and, uh, work that it provides for us or gives to us. And then I've also given you a list of all of the commercial, uh, accounts, via three-quarter inch all the way up to eight inch, so you guys can see that physically, who, who are these, uh, businesses in the community?
Chief, um, can you, uh, well, actually, why don't you finish your whole presentation, then we'll go back to questions on, so.
Okay, um, as far as just the public safety fee for water meters, that's kind of where we're at, so if you want to go ahead and ask questions.
Um, so, on the public safe, uh, or on the, yeah, the public safety fee for the water meter size, where, uh, where did, I see there's two different fee schedules that you've put together.
Yeah.
What? What prompted you to come up with those dollar amounts? Just curious.
Looking at other, uh, municipalities and cities within city, within the state of Oregon, and then also feedback from, from the Commission itself, and then working with, uh, City Manager. We came up with two different fee schedules to kind of adjust, um, the larger meters to be more of a fee, have a higher fee than the lower use customers.
I would think, um, I mean, I'm just gonna speak for myself, like Commissioner. I think on the eight inch, that should go to 120. I think six inch could go to 100. In terms of the, the meter sizes. I think, I think this should be raised, at least on the top end. You know, if you have a water meter that, and I know also the specific, uh, entity that's at the eight inch line, does suck a lot of water pressure out of that neighborhood when it's operating, just based on how everything's set up there. But, um.
What were those recommended numbers again?
Well, I mean, I just, I'm just saying for myself here, but I think the six inch, I'm more in favor of the structure that you put together on the second, second one.
Sure.
Instead of the, the first one. So, uh, the six inch, I think, should go to 100, and the eight inch should go to 120 in my mind. I don't know if the Commission feels differently on that, um, or how they feel about it.
I, I mean, I'm just being surprised at $10 per fee myself.
Yeah, well, it's, uh, definitely your feedback is welcome to adjust those fees and. Yeah, well, it's, definitely your feedback is welcome to adjust those fees and.
I don't know how it compares to other cities, but I'm, I would think that it has to be possibly like a lower meter fees.
Yeah, so when I was doing my research, most of the cities in, in the state are doing residential and commercial. But we've kind of gone that, that way to just towards commercial, so there, I didn't find a lot of fee schedules definitely for just commercial. Found a little bit, but not too much. It didn't really help, so.
And, and please keep in mind, these are like monthly rates, so you know, that total is across a year. We did at this time withdraw the apartment complexes because they often have one meter. And so it'd be hard for that charge to be distributed across that apartment in a way that seemed equitable in comparison, like an apartment complex with kind of the more commercial aspect. So at this time, we focused only on commercial because it was a hard challenge to differentiate with those meters in particular. Just wanted you to make, make you aware of that because the last conversation, we did have some apartment complexes included and they were only, it wasn't, I think, all the apartment complexes either, so we wanted to focus.
I appreciate that, but I guess my feeling is that you could double these and it would be an impact on a corporate business. If you're charging twenty dollars for a, for a meter fee, suppose a ten dollars per meter fee, it wouldn't be, there are a chance this is gonna close the doors.
Sure.
Not a big enough percentage of the cost of doing business, you know, that would make that big a difference, I think. I would personally like to see you, you know, increase these to a certain level.
Okay.
And this is, I, I wanted to have the fire chief bring these as one option. At the previous meeting, we also talked about business license. The problem with the business license is it's basically self-disclosed and it would be almost impossible to monitor. We would have to do annual inspections of everybody.
Well, it's once a year, too.
And it's once a year, so it'd be very problematic to do through a business license. There is a third option we have not discussed yet, and one I wanted to bring forward when I saw these numbers. The total annual projected revenue here, even with that buffering up of numbers, the larger meters, there's very few. And so another option that may be worth discussion would be a fire levy. And that would be in the range of more like three fifty to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what we'd be looking at if it was approved by voters. The reality is we're looking at possibly trying to get at least one more staff person or programming to help our fire department to get to the capacity they need. We have been seeing challenges, for example, this summer with staffing, especially on the weekends. We have amazing volunteers. I'm not in any way, you know, saying that, but it is simply for the amount of staff we have to serve this community. We are seeing in the summer, you know, like wildfire callouts and conflagrations. We're seeing summer months, it's like they're working hard all week and then by the weekends, there's not as many responders. And so the reality is we're looking at, we do as a city need more paid staff. And, and what can we get from a meter rate? Not very much is the answer. It wouldn't, it wouldn't staff a, you know, even a halftime position, probably.
The, the issue, so when you go to a levy, are you talking about, you're, I take it you're talking about a G O, a general, or not a general obligation, but an operations levy?
An operation.
Yeah. So every five years you have to go out, and we do that with police. I know that one year we did do a combined police-fire one that failed. And that was years ago, though. One thing I will just note is that I feel if you put in, if you put in a fee schedule for meters, you can almost instantaneously start collecting revenues for that, albeit not that much comparatively to what a levy would provide. However, I don't feel like you're going to get a lot of support for a levy if you put forward a fee meter schedule, even if it is just on commercial lines. Now, I could be wrong on that, but I, I think that it's kind of one of those things where if we do it, I would say put in a fee structure if you wanna go, you know, dip your toes in the water, get some extra funds, and then start planning for a levy. I think levies take at least a year, sometimes two, to build up. If you're gonna start a new one, to build up the case, and it needs to be a concerted effort of, here's what we're getting, here's what we're doing. And, and I think that, well, I think it, it could pass and we should probably start planning for one. As a matter of fact, I would be supportive of a operations levy. I do think that we have to make sure the timing's right. We don't wanna compete it with police. And we gotta make sure that we get this implemented before the school decides to go out for another one. Because if it goes up for that, the price tag of that alone's gonna be pretty weary. If you look at, if you look at places that try to pass operations levies statewide, I, I keep the spreadsheet of different cities that, you know, put out a level, operations or, or go bond. It's a bit mixed bag, it really depends. And so I just wanna make sure that if we're gonna talk about a levy, that we're all in on that and that we have boots-on-the-ground support to really get that out. I, I think that, I think it's worthwhile. I think we should do it. But I also think that we probably could use some funds now as well. And maybe part of the operations levy is we, we can do some polling possibly to find out, you know, after we implement the fee schedule to see how that, that plays out. But I definitely think we could use it. I think it would be good to be able to buy trucks without having to borrow from the Tansy Point. I mean, we've been pulling from Tansy Point revenues to pay for fire trucks, which we needed to get and needed to do. But, you know, ideally, we would be able to get you some funds so that you don't have to.
Yeah. I think that personally, I would love to see a levy, and only a levy that we have five years to figure out what our next step is. Because we're at that point where we're gonna, you know, we're, we're taxing the volunteers so much with their time that we're just eventually gonna burn them all out.
Sure.
And so having a levy and then not having to get money from Tansy Point, I think, would take away from the fact that we need to employ people and use that money to employ them versus buying vehicles.
I'm not necessarily saying that we would not do what we're doing with Tansy Point, because obviously we have kind of a set aside in there. What I'm just saying is that as our needs increase, you know, at some point, that whole lease might end up needing to be taken up in, in interest payments. Because, I mean, fire trucks ain't getting cheaper.
Yeah.
It blows my mind how much they, how much they cost, and I work for a company that makes it, so, you know, but like, but what I will say is, so Chief, I guess, I'll ask you a follow-up question that you say, get a levy just to get started to see what you need. If you were to go for a, an operations levy, would you, what do you see as the fund amount that you need? What would it go to? Would it go to capital equipment? Would it go towards a facility? Would it towards the EMS stand-up that you proposed? Would it go towards more paid staff? What, what are we looking at?
Ultimately, I think that it's a cart before the horse kind of thing, where sure, you get more employees, but what do we do with them for housing? We have no housing, so really, I'm looking at a staffing and facilities upgrade. And we've talked about facilities upgrade for a while now and adding more room. The important part to me is that, that we have the workforce. We can figure out a way to temporarily house them or whatever we need to do to make that work. But to me, the, the most important thing is getting staff that are able to respond during, you know, during this, the work hours in, in twenty-four hours a day. That's where we're lacking.
So you would say that if you were to get an op, an operations levy, your first push would then be to get full-time staff for just regular calls?
Yeah, staff up.
And how many would that be?
What's that?
Going, how many, what, what is that delta?
So I worked with Jessica in finance and we came up with some different numbers. So if we did an estimated fifty-five cents a thousand, we would generate around four hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars annually.
And that would be for two staff or how many staff?
That will, one hundred and fifty is kind of where we thought as far as each employee, so that would generate enough for maybe three.
Three, okay.
So each, each home or a home that's assessed at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we'd approximately pay a hundred and ninety-two dollars for the year.
Is three enough staff for what we actually need?
No.
No, I mean, there's really.
So what do we actually need and can we work backwards there?
I'd say like nine.
We need nine.
Nine or more.
Nine, okay, in the next few years.
Yeah. But that's where we get into that facility.
Yeah, where, where you're gonna house them for full crews. I mean, here's another question. This is a little outside the box, but asked two questions. First question, the city manager leads up to the second. Where are we in terms of, what are the remaining projects that are feasible within urban renewal?
Within urban renewal currently, so your, your priorities for urban renewal at this time have been, there was a library purchase building was, I think, priority number two, priority, or number one, priority number two was a marina dock. You still also have outstanding work being done on floodproofing the sixty-nine northeast Heron building. There's about ninety thousand outstanding that's still being spent on that building for floodproofing. You still have the Peterson project, which was started before the final priority list. I will be bringing this fall the initial design and then you'll see from there, you know, if you wanna leave that to the end and whatever's left in the coffers for urban renewal, spend it for that project. You're still wrapping up two facade grants. We have curtailed any future facade grants, but there's still two outstanding that they're reimbursable, so that's about twenty thousand. And then you have the New Way Carpet Agreement that was dispersed, sixty thousand was dispersed and forty thousand is remaining reimbursable.
I guess, maybe, let me, let me shorten this here. We had, I think there was a, it was kind of like we're running down the project list. There was a bunch of projects that we did look to, look at at one point, the childcare, some other ones that just didn't pan out.
So to shorten this and summarize, what I just listed is gonna take all the money that's left in the coffers.
And how much is, how much was in the budget for the Peterson property?
I think it was originally around two fifty, but there's, there's no money that's gonna, I mean, you're, you're rapidly spending down already from, from projects that have carried over into this fiscal year. You're rapidly expending everything, so the, I think there's one point seven in this fiscal year and then a wrap-up in the final year. If you do the, the projects I just mentioned, they're all expended.
Sure. I'm just thinking, I mean, I'm, and this is very off the cuff and out the moon, I guess. But, I mean, there is a house right next to C Hall, next to the Peterson property. And, you know, maybe if, you know, if, if there was a way to find some additional housing, I mean, that would be the most expeditious, I think that was. But the problem is if you don't, if you buy the housing, but you don't get the levy, then you're basically got a building that, you know.
I think some of why, Fire Chief, and you can forgive me if I'm wrong, but what he's referring to, though, is also the, basically bunk beds in the fire department, so they can roll out from.
Right, but where would you put them? The fire department's already too small, correct?
Right, well, we have the Hammond one, we have some possibility for if, you know, if this, if this city hall, if we were to move some other departments in the near future, there may be some options there.
I noticed just being at the Bremerton Ferry Dock the other day, the Navy has these forty-foot container modular units that they stack.
Oh, sure.
But they use them for housing, I, I mean, pretty readily of these forty-foot container units. That, that could work possibly. I mean, we could stick one out in the.
Yeah, but maybe the field or.
I mean, there are these modular units that you can get, probably lease them, whatever. Which is probably much cheaper than building something or.
But we'd still need a building because what you have now does not suffice for the needs of the equipment that you have, right?
No, it, it, we are at our peak or max. So there's nowhere to go. We don't, we can't expand it out to the parking lot, and the food carts are there. We're kind of in a stuck spot.
If we do do the Peterson lot, though, that will enable the employee parking currently next to the fire department to be open game potentially, if we wanna make the Peterson lot. You know, so that does open some possibilities to be connected to the building.
Sure.
So expand on the current fire hall and people would park.
I mean, it, it, yeah, I mean, the, the idea with the Peterson lot was that you wouldn't just have parking, you know, available to public when you needed it. But also if we could move employees there, if we needed to do more development of something in the future.
The, the original purchase, just to remind of the parking lot where the food cart pod was for the fire department.
Yeah.
I think that bigger question here is, is it, how do we get the funds? Not how we fix the things to be fixed today, but how do we get the funds? Two thousand and five, I decided to, I was kind of scared of war, and they were going bankrupt. They were gonna have to shut down there. The only way they could find funding would be to put out a levy. Today, they have self-sufficient and they have continued to run, and every five years, they go back out and put it to the voters, whether or not that levy makes sense, or they wanna continue to do what they do. I am not one normally to wanna do anything that raises tax.
Sure.
I support this a hundred percent. Because I believe that the people of this community, what want, understand. And I think that we have a problem that a lot of cities don't have. And that is, again, the amount of responses we do for people who do not live in our own community.
Yep, absolutely.
Amount of what manpower it takes to do those calls.
Yeah.
And so I truly believe, one, I would love to see the really insurance companies out there and say, okay, we need to be reimbursed. I know it's a difficult thing based upon the staffing we have. But most certainly, I think it's something to aim for in the future, for the source of income. But I totally, totally support the idea of putting together a levy and making it something that we aim for sooner than later. While I agree with the mayor that, you know, it'd be good to be able to, to put forth the meter sizes and raise, but it's seventeen thousand dollars. That's what we're talking about here. It's not about the really, in the scheme of things, to make that big a difference.
Yeah.
I would really see us put a levy forward and I, and I, I know that when we did the one for the fair, it took work. We had to go knock on doors, we had to explain to people why we needed to have it done. You know, you had to split it worse, people understood, that it cost you basically the price of a pizza and a, and a coke, you know, for your family at one night. Keep the fairgrounds alive. Well, I think it's worth that ten kind of money, maybe a little bit more. But first for you to have, you know, fire department that really has what it needs, so I totally support that.
And back to my first, or something I said that it's looking at, it is a five-year ability to figure it out. So Band-Aid. Could we, if we did a levy, could we use the next five years or three years of that first part of that levy to really figure out what we can do to really fund the department, so we don't have to depend on that levy? You know, is there other options, you know, taxing districts or, you know, retail locations? Because they're the ones that are bringing in a, you know, a large amount of people to the area.
So I would just, I would say this, I mean, I, I'll, I, like I said, I support a levy. But in terms of getting it passed, I just wanna be clear that I think we need to have an idea of what we're planning, even, even though if this is the feel you out, kind of like,
Yeah.
Give us some money so that we can figure out what to spend it. I think voters in general are gonna still wanna know what is gonna be spent for it.
Sure.
And I know with police, when they got into their FTE on theirs, there was some iterations of that levy before they finally got it passed, that said, okay, it's gonna go towards increasing headcount, police department, certain amount of FTE. Now, some people think that that's one way or the other, but the wording is basically, you know, that we're adding FTE. So I think we need to make sure that if we're gonna go for a levy, that there's a specific, what the voters are gonna get out of it. And the reason why I say that is, if you think about, take, you're familiar with Warrington, say you move to a new community.
Sure.
Or even if you've been there for a while, but you're not very politically connected, you don't keep abreast of what's going on, right? And you're seeing costs go up from either tariffs, gas, whatever. And then your state legislature is gonna be meeting in August at the end of the month to raise your taxes, probably significantly to fund transportation. And so on the backs of that, you know, you've seen all these cost increases. And then you get an ask for money from the government, which people in general just don't like the government and for whatever reasons. And that kind of trickles down locally sometimes. Being specific about what you're asking for helps a lot. People being like, okay, I can get behind that instead of like, here's a blank check. Because as much and as great as the things that the fire department does, my experience with voters is blank checks generally, people don't like to write, you know. So we just need to make sure that we have something to give the voters about, here's, here's a trial run of free FTE and, and a permanent intern, you know, for the summers, or we're gonna start an EMS service with this, and here's what you're gonna see from these added things, you know. And then we've gotta start making the case on, hey, this is the, the struggles that we've seen as well, so.
No, absolutely. I think that we'd be well-prepared to go forward with that and be able to give them some good quality information and.
Are we looking next year? Are we looking, too late to file for this year?
Yeah, the earliest would be November of twenty twenty-six. It's usually the double majority is when we would go out for a levy. And it would be specifically towards staffing, whether that's interns, EMS, or, um, the fully paid staff.
We need a double, we need a double majority for midterms?
I think for an operation levy, I, I'll double check that, but I believe we do.
So is that, uh?
I don't think we need a double majority for an operations levy.
Okay, I'll double check.
It's tax, it's, it's tax increases on off, off normal cycle. I think if you did a May or special election, they required.
We already have planned this year, um, to go out in May on the ballot. And I am not clear if we have anything for this fall, but I, it would be, in my opinion, too soon. I, I think to do that would be, um, quite honestly, you most likely would not get the vote because you do not have enough informational time. People need, uh, this is the very first we're mentioning it. We need time to have people be well-informed, be very clear in the ask and what that ask is and what it will, what people will receive from that.
Plus a May turnout is always a hard.
Yeah.
Usually an anti-tax vote.
May or November of this year would not be, I think, a good response time.
Yeah, so November next year. Okay. Well, I mean, so is there any other questions related to this specific fee now, now that we've wandered pretty far? We can move on to the next part.
I guess I, I still have a question. So with the levy that you proposed, four hundred and fifty thousand would be the annual. So we still have a nine hundred thousand dollar shortfall from what we actually need.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that having, you know, asking for a million dollars would probably not go over too well. But with that said, I'm doing yours pleasure or the commission's pleasure.
And, and there's always, in my opinion, with cities, there's always the, here's what we'd love to have, but we have to start somewhere. And we're not going to start at those high numbers. The reality is, I mean, I've seen this in Seaside and Astoria as well. You start with what you believe the voters can shoulder and understand as a reasonable ask to support a, uh, growth in a city, development in a city, you know, an influx of tourism without the tourism dollars to support it. That you have your public safety, that are, have been shouldering this burden for years. We need to, we need to start lifting it to this next level. And so the levy is usually not the full ask. Because you know it'll be turned down. It is the, we have to start somewhere. Here's where we'd like to start. And it may stay that level for years, but at the same time, it is more than what we're currently receiving and it will help.
Remind me what the police levy is.
It is, uh, is it forty-five? Thirty-four.
Police levy is thirty-four. Okay. And I know, uh, if I recall correctly, I think the, well, this was, this is an outdated stat. I think it was five years ago when they talked about, or six years ago when they talked about the police levy, like the, the ideal staffing for the police department would be twenty-five people based on the numbers in the, in the community. But what we really wanted to get out of that levy was twenty-four hour coverage, which before, before we didn't have an officer on duty twenty-four hours. That was something that's been within ten years that we've got. And so I think at this point, it's, um, time to talk about what is, you know. Now, if we get to this three extra people, does that mean that we now have, uh, you need, how many people is three people that would man a vehicle? Minimums?
Depending on the call. I mean, if it's a fire call, it's all hands. But if it's a medical call, we could probably do with two or three people.
Two or three, okay. So if we get, if we get three extra people, you have three on at the daytime. But of course you're, then you have shifts on the weekends too, that kind of throws you back. So what do you, what do you get for three people? Operationally?
Yeah, you get, um, you know, forty extra hours a week for those people. We might be able to rotate them through twenty-four hour schedules so that they work twenty-four hours and, you know, on their own, supplemented with volunteers. There's a couple of different ways to do it, but I think right now it's just the idea of getting three extra bodies to, you know, help share alone relieve the volunteers from being so dependent upon.
Okay. How many hours are you putting under cover shifts at Catfield?
Oh, for here, for me? Yeah, it varies, but, um, we can speed busy. Sometimes it just depends on call volume and, and if there's volunteers in town that are going to take duty.
Yeah, I totally support the idea of doing the meter raises until twenty twenty-six, I mean, till we can be footed forward. And I, I, I think that you're underestimating the amount that you could charge to, to raise those meter rates. In the meantime, I would almost double them and feel that you, you really isn't a, a big enough of an impact that would cause an issue. Fourteen thousand or seventeen thousand dollars is not a, especially when you consider how many businesses there are and warranty that you're taking your list from, isn't, isn't a, a large amount of money. So if we were to double that, uh, it would at least re-dephrase some of those costs and help you be able to create more revenue than you're able to do. But so at what time we got around to the levy in twenty twenty-six? And even if the levy then couldn't fund until twenty twenty-seven, at least you continue to have income coming in in the meantime.
Sure.
My only concern with the increase of the, um, fee structure is we have the high school and the middle school or the grade school with some of the highest meters. And obviously their budgets are already not in a good place. So that was, that's just like one consideration that's top of mind. And then the other thing is, I, I would love to see a shift more of the burden onto Costco, Walmart, like these other big box stores that are driving a lot of the utilization. And I, is there a creative way that we could do that?
So they, we, we discussed that at a couple of meetings before, the issue with, so their meter sizes aren't that large comparatively, and that's because they don't use particularly that much water compared to
Sure.
pack house, so to speak. And so, uh, the, the real question becomes, I mean, I would, we talked about that with police too as well, like if, you know, do, do you buy call volume or something like that? I didn't remember that legal really gave us a good pathway that was, that passed the test with the state requirements related to how you assess fees and charges. So I, I wouldn't say that it's entirely impossible, but I would have to take some creative reworking about how you would phrase and do that. But also keep in mind that we're looking at, um, a shopping cart fee here soon later too, so.
I know, it's a lot.
So, yeah. Um, I, I think that, uh, I think in terms of, I mean, the chief has put together pretty good plan with comparables, which I think are easy to at least say, hey, this isn't invented out of thin air. We're, we're running off of comparables from other communities. And I think to Commissioner Mitchell's point, getting some funds now would be better than no funds waiting. And, uh, we're not doing this on residential, so, um, I would say that we could probably go forward with a, I mean, I would go for the second one because that's six hundred or sixty-seven thousand eight hundred. I would go with the, the second meter, um, option and then, move, move towards starting to work on a levy plan. But then also I think we need to talk about the other options. So, um, Chief, do you want to talk about false alarm, medical alarm fees there?
Yeah, so, uh, let's go to present, the presentation for false fire and medical alarm fee policy. How it reads is basically each type of event, um, medical alarms, we'll start with that one, or first, first false alarm. So it's like the police department where, uh, you get one, one a month, correct? Or one in a calendar year, uh, for false. And then after that, they can start charging for false alarms. And the idea is to say, you need to get your alarms figured out so you stop getting these, these fees and stop creating calls for us. And on appendix C in the back is a fee schedule that the state puts together for us as fire departments and conflagrations and be very easy to use this model. In fact, Seaside Fire and Gier Fire are using this, this model right now as far as reimbursement. So we could go through, you know, reimbursing for apparatus, volunteer time, pay sap time. Or is this, you just want to have a set fee of, say, a hundred bucks or. And it, it breaks it down into medical, false medical, unprotected or inadequately protected areas, so places that we don't have mutual agreements with, but they depend on our service or, or call for us to help. We could even do a fire code inspection enforcement fee. Hazardous material response policy fee. Technical rescue fee. And on, on, uh, life, health and safety response fee. And that really goes towards, um, just last week, we had, uh, two different times where two separate private ambulance companies or, or a transport companies called us to assist get their patient back into the house. And we, they're a private business using basically city funds.
The taxpayers.
Yeah, and I don't really see that as being right. I think that we should be billing them for those things. And that's something that is accounted for in this as well. I think this will generate some revenue. What Seaside and Gier Art said is that they've kind of generated like close to thirteen or fifteen thousand dollars. It, it helps pay for some equipment or some things that they need, but it's not a big maker.
But we're talking about trying to, you know, I think take the money generated aside, in my mind, that's just fair play.
Sure.
You know what I mean? So we've got volunteers taking, you know, time off their work or whatever they're doing to go out and respond. I remember when we had that issue, was it at, uh, the urgent care, when they were calling us for, I don't even know if it was transport. I think it was just to check somebody out that was already being sent off to the, the emergency room. And we were there all the time and it was just ridiculous. So I think that that's just fair play. Like if there is a commercial and I don't even think we can even say it's for profit because hospitals are technically nonprofit.
Sure.
But, uh, which I would dispute in the critical care access area, but, um, the, uh, but I think that they should have to pay for any type of work that we do, that they're basically in their care, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So the public, the public should not bear the cost. The public should actually reap the benefit of assisting that in that case. So I'm, I'm in favor of that. Um, I also think that it's kind of interesting to me though, um, with, uh, the open burning violation fee policy, I would say if you go into extreme, there's no warning.
Yeah.
I mean, you gotta know, if it's extreme, it's, there's signs everywhere pretty much say it's extreme fire danger. You gotta be pretty wanton to be able to decide to light off an open fire during extreme.
The last one I can remember of it, it got, uh, ended up getting excited for almost five thousand dollar ticket. I don't know where it went from there, but it was reckless burning during extreme fire behavior, so.
Cause I think there's a certain element of the population that's just going to bet on getting a warning in some cases. And so I think especially when the, uh, period is extreme, um, it should go to, it could, it should go straight to, to ticket versus a, a warning. And then the fire code inspection enforcement fee policy.
Yeah, kind of.
Give me more on that.
So put that together just as a, not a caveat, but just as ability to, if we needed, you go out and do, right now, we don't do a lot of fire inspections because we don't have a staff for it. But, uh, the ones that I have done and gone out with the state farm marshal's office and done like Fred Myers and, and, you know, the bigger, big box stores. Uh, experiences, we give them a list of, and cite the code. Tell them the correction and then you say, we'll come visit you again in a month. And in a month, they might have gotten half of those done. So at that point, do we need to say, hey, this is important to the community, that you're building safe for everyone? Should we be giving them a fine at that point? That's where we're with that one.
So how does that work when you have a grandfathered facility? So say, for example, it was built in the sixties or fifties. So do you go in there and say, oh, this whole thing is not code? Do you need to, you were, you down or, I mean?
It would be code related to public safety. So, uh, you go in and say, like a, a refrigerator can't be plugged into extension cord into a outlet, has to go direct the outlet. If you say, this needs to be fixed right away, they don't, they keep going on.
Okay.
Or they're not maintaining their fire pump. You know, it's all maintenance code with, for the fire department. So if they're not maintaining those things, you know, I'll give you a fine and you could have paid somebody come maintenance us for the not finding it, so.
Sure, okay. All right. And I think the admin response fee policy makes sense. I think, uh, I would say in terms of utility assistance, I would only really think that that should be, yeah, related to, I think utility fee assistance is the tricky part. And I think that should be something related to, if somebody doesn't call four one one before they dig.
Sure.
They bust out a utility line.
Yeah.
They need to be whacked with that, you know what I mean? I mean, CCB shouldn't be called too. A lot of people don't get the CCB call on them for that, but that's just, you know.
Okay.
But it, but if there's like, say, for example, a, um, a water main breaks because of some sort of natural hazard or disaster, I'm not so sure the taxpayer should be whacked with a utility fee, assist, assistance fee when that was something completely out of their control.
Tree falls on a power line during windstorm, not really.
That, that, I mean, I mean, I'm happy to charge Pacific Power. But I'm not sure about any property owners per se.
Yeah, now, this, that was, this utility assistance fee would be someone we'd be billing to the provider. So it'd be Pacific Power or Northwest Natural or something, you know, along those lines, not to the.
Do it then, yeah.
Unless, like you're saying, you didn't call four one one or dig before you dig and you created an issue because you didn't do what you're supposed to do. Then I could see us going down that road as well.
Here's the, now, we're not talking lots of money here, and I know we had a conversation about this too. How much in terms of what we're collecting from all these different little fees and charges that are being proposed? How much is that? You just have one admin.
Yeah, so it's.
So how much, how mu, how, how much is the bet, how much is the juice worth the squeeze here? Which one's going to give us the most juice worth the squeeze?
Yeah, I think that with having one halftime or part-time employee and admin, uh, as an assistant, there's things that she would be able to do for us to help facilitate and do the billing. There are, is also companies that we could use that, you know, basically to pay three percent of whatever the bill is and they collect the money and order it over to us.
Okay. Well, Commissioners, um, there's multiple, uh, proposals. This is a discussion. But, uh, out of this, hopefully the fire department can get at least in sort of direction where to go. It sounds like there is support for a levy, uh, in general with a plan put in place before we start volunteering on that. Okay, so levies on the table. What about, uh, let's just go down the line here. What about the, um, meter structure?
I'm all for meter. Yeah.
Is, is there a way to exclude schools?
Why, why would we admit to schools? I mean, the schools, the electric company is going to admit them. The, the, no other, no other organization that does business with the schools are going to admit them. And they have price increases, they have to absorb them just like anybody else.
We're not going to put the school out of business with this.
I think the second schedule myself too, I'm all, uh.
Yeah. We actually collect a tax and don't get paid for that collection of tax for the schools at the building department.
I, I mean, just considering the current circumstances and the amount of strain that our current schools are under, I just think adding anything to their plates right now would be, especially considering like Walmart and Costco, they can increase it. Schools aren't increasing revenues. Like they don't have revenue streams to increase or to pass the bill on to people. This is, I just think it's an unfair burden to put on to our schools, but I do agree that there should be a fee, fee structure on these meter sizes.
So.
And just for clarity, uh, did I understand correctly when you referred to like Costco and, and some of the others? So they start at the two-inch, um, meter. So am I hearing you would like to see a higher fee for two-inch meters and higher? Cause those are the range of Costco on up. I mean, it includes other, that's why we included this list. You could kind of see the breakdown of businesses. But it's, it's kind of surprising to see, you know, you kind of assume Costco's like the eight inch or whatever, but they're not. They're in the two-inch meter range and a lot of businesses are. So again, I want a little bit more clarity on where you want to see.
Across the board.
Across the board, okay. And is that a kind of a?
I, 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 I feel like this needs to be, this is new. And I think that, um, I think we need to, I think it's easier to hang your hat on comparables. Staff has proposed the second tier. It's all based on comparables. I, I think that is the.
Yeah, for the second tier, second tier myself.
Okay.
And I also don't think that forty-eight hundred bucks a year is going to get the school district out of operations when they're charging us. But how much for the library building?
Uh, quite a bit.
Yeah. So, no.
I think we're at twenty-eight thousand a year on that. I can't remember for sure though.
I, I think everything's going to be fine.
So I'm hearing second tier, so keep to that. And, and you are correct, the chief did a lot of research and looked at comparables across the state. So it is a, it is a fair assessment instead of, you know, poking at arbitrary numbers to meet a, a metric. Yeah.
So second, uh, second bracket, um, as presented, Commissioner Poe?
Yes.
I agree.
All right. So it sounds like we can move forward on second tier as you've prevented, um, uh, suggested for the, um, water meter fee structure.
So you'd like to.
What about the, uh, the license?
Oh, yeah, uh, license. Do you want to talk about business license?
Yeah, I just, this is something I kind of threw together. One thing I noticed and, and same manager has touched on it earlier this evening. Going through a packet of business licenses, seeing, uh, what businesses were licensed in the, in the city limits. And then how many employees had listed. I was on my way home, looked over and left and I see this company, a paving company, paving a, a park. And there's quite a few people, there's two or three on the shovels and the trucks and in and out. And, and so I thought to myself, I'm. And so I thought to myself, I'm gonna look and see how many they've registered, it's zero. So, to me, there, that's the, we have to, we're talking about. It's self-reporting, right? Right now, it's scheduled as self-reporting.
Let me, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm getting stuck on this and I need to, I need to clear it out of my mind. So was this a city contractor that got? Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
A private. Construction job. But then just, so then it piqued my curiosity and I just started going through and I'm like, I know I've seen more than, more than two vans in town for this company, more than that and, you know. So there's a lot of self-reporting isn't accurate and I don't see how the fee is really working right now. To, to gain that, I think it's what, five dollars per employee after the first initial two or something like that. So I just kind of put together a quick little proposal for city fee for business licenses and. And the numbers are high, but. I gotta pull it up here. Sorry. I don't know what I did, I must have misplaced it. I'm sorry. So I guess in the gist of it for that post city fee or for the business license fee, it was, you know. Basically put together in four or five different categories depending on size.
Is that the one you're looking at?
Yeah, there you go.
You can have that.
Thank you. So low-risk businesses, moderate risk businesses, high-risk hazardous businesses. And then large event centers or large businesses. A base license fee. Depending on where they fit in and then a proposed public safety fee if we were interested in that and then the fee total on the far right. I did not do any comparables to any other cities. It's just kind of something I'm kind of winging together to, to see, cause it's not. It's not my purview or. Mean to really get into the city hall side of business licenses, but. We talked about attaching a fee, so I put together a sample schedule.
I think, uh, in terms of business licenses and I'm just. And I, I think Chief Police. Knows this very well. We've been kind of. Struggling, I guess you could say, to find out how we want the business license to look like, because there's been a lot of different things where business license has been invoked when it's not really actually for enforceable. And in general, I know that we've talked about redoing that in multiple ways. For different reasons. And so I think in terms of. Business license restructure, I would suggest that this is a more comprehensive conversation than just fire. I think, I think we have police to concern, you know, consider. And I also think that in just in general, that's probably a work session of its own.
I agree to that. I, I think the work session makes a lot of sense, but I do like, I really like where you're going with this. I think. Instead of just a proposed safety fee, it should be a public safety fee. Cause I think that there's more fees that could come out of business licenses. They can continue to not drop the business license fees that support the city. And to take those public safety fees and use them for higher employees.
I wanna be clear too, um, when we passed the resolutions establishing whatever fee structure that it's made clear that we. Dedicate that to fire department instead of going to, let's say, you know, if you're doing a water meter fee because public works. Now that I don't like the public work staff, it's just I wanna make sure that we're not just throwing into general buckets and then washing it. I think it's important for you to do that. But I do think that in business licenses, I think this one, I mean, it's a basis for discussion, but I think that's a whole nother work session of riff.
We said it wasn't, my intention wasn't to rework the whole system, but I just saw there was a deficiency and it was hard to really come up with something without. Providing myself some kind of format to attach it to.
Cause for example, I mean, there's businesses that call police and they're there but daily. So that's different than. Back coast who, you know, if the monent tank blows, everybody in the town dies, you know. Different, different, different needs from different departments for different reasons. So. Okay. Is everyone okay with business licenses being tabled to a later time in a work session? Okay, alright, so.
And just to be clear on that, you have three other work sessions already scheduled, so this would not come back for a while.
Understand that. Uh, let's see here. And then we also have the false fire medical alarm fee policy, so. False alarms, uh, first alarm is a. Is free, but no fee is imposed on second or laters if it's an actual fire medical treatment ends up being rendered. Now, in terms of medical treatment being rendered. There's a lot of people just don't know much about medical stuff. Say, I'm, let's just pretend I'm a elderly person. And I get heartburn or something like that. I think I'm getting a heart attack. And the fire department comes and I, I mean, I don't know what's considered rendering versus just like, no, you're fine.
No, if somebody calls on one and be for any need medically wise, if they think they're having a, a heart attack, turns out to be. You know, something different that's not life threatening. We don't determine that necessarily in the field. Uh, maybe. John Brownwood is a paramedic with his skills, but as far as EMTs and first responders or EMRs, we. We wouldn't be able to definitely say near his heaven.
So if, if you show up to a scene, someone's got indigestion or whatever.
Yeah, we're treating him.
You're treating them either way, okay.
And we're gonna send them to the hospital if they would go. Now, where you get into the sticky wicked is where you get these repeat people that call for the same thing and they never wanna go to the hospital, so we feel like we're just. Going, we're not, we're not doctors, we don't make house calls.
Or like the neighbor that couldn't breathe, but then went to go to her hair appointment after you guys showed up. You know, that would be considered a false alarm? I would say so. I mean, the other guy didn't.
It, it happens more than, than you know, but.
Alright. And I think that's fine, yeah. Commission?
I think it'd be a very rare opportunity to bill somebody for a medical emergency, to be honest with you.
I have a question about illegal burns. Are we fighting? For that now or after a first warning in some way?
So what we're, we're doing is if you have a burn permit and everything checks out, you can find. If you don't have a burn permit, we educate. And say, hey, this is the process, you need to get a burn permit and then they give it generally ninety percent of the time, they go get a burn permit.
If they don't and they burn, is that a fine?
Yeah, we would eventually, as soon as it gets called in or we.
I think we should be doing that after initial contact or an initial infraction, if it's a chronic. Cause I've experienced it in my neighborhood where there's just chronic and I don't know if you were fighting.
Yeah, and I, I tend to, and you know, it can change. But I tend to use that as opportunity to educate the people that are having an infraction that this is how it's done and. They usually abide by it, so.
So hazmat incident. Tell me about how that gets imposed. So I drive on the highway, get hit, my radiator blows.
No, it wouldn't be that, it'd be more of like, just an example, um, so there wasn't too long ago, there was a, a. Somebody brought something to the school that was apparently hazardous and they mixed it together. I, I personally would say that like, you created that event, so we're gonna bill your family, the child's parents for that event because. If they hadn't done that, we wouldn't have been there in that first place and that was, from my understanding, a malicious intent event, so. Um, or like a trucker or a semi truck. Down one oh one, especially, you know, we had one not too long ago where it blew a, a motor up, any drug. Fluid all down the highway and we had to go clean up. That's seen with ODOT, but we use materials, labor. It'd be nice to bill those things back to the insurance company or the trucking company that created that.
So you're kind of talking more of like malicious intent and commercial industrial type stuff. You're not talking about. The three car pileup where the motors get destroyed and people died and, and. And motors are leaking oil.
That would be covered in the. Highway portion of it, so we would, if we go to a, a car wreck. We would keep track of our expendables, the things that we're, you know, putting down on the ground to absorb those things and then. You know, bill those up appropriately.
They'll go to insurance though, right?
Yeah, we could bill to their insurance.
I think Mayor, another example might be where you have an RB, RV that has not. Cleaned out their septic. And they choose to dump it. I've had that happen prior to the city. Where they chose to dump their septic into city property and then the city had to remediate, including removing all the gravel underneath that RV.
Okay, um, so commissioners, do you have any comments on, I mean, there's the false fire medical alarm fee policy, there's the open burning violation policy. There's unprotected and not really protected area response fee policy. I mean, I guess my question is, do you wanna go down all these little things or do you prefer to go with what we've got now? And then test the waters and then see what goes next? What, what do you wanna do?
Could we go with the chief's discretion on, on violations and fighting at this point? Possible?
Um, I personally don't know if the juice is worth the squeeze. I'll obviously defer to you, but this seems like. You, a lot of administrative work.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and we're already tight as it is.
Exactly, so we're adding more work to your plate to get a couple thousand dollars. I, I would love to see us generate. More money in alternative ways that are less of a burden on you and staff. If that's what we have, that's what we have. But my vote would be to consider. Other opportunities to have more money that are much easier and a long-term solution, because this is all dependent on. We, on things we don't know if they're gonna happen, so. You can't really build a budget on hypotheticals.
Yeah, yeah, you can't. I'm really. Wanna figure out a way to, to capture that, that some income or some revenue from people that come from outside the area and that. You know, in shopier, how that works is something that would be a discussion we need to have.
Well, a lot of these fees you're discussing would come from those kind of folks, it looks like to me. And so I would say that, uh, I'm, I would suggest that the, when we come forward with the meter. The meter charges, that there's a schedule, a fee schedule, kind of like we do with building department and stuff like that, that comes back with what you're describing, that seems okay. That'll be a little bit more organized than in terms of like in one sheet.
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, I think that that's where you start.
Okay, I can do that. And then would the commission be opposed to me putting together another proposal for. Possibly a, a retail sales tax in, in the area?
I'm just gonna say I know voters are not gonna pass that.
Well, I wonder, so we think voters will pass a tax on themselves for a levy, but we don't think people will pass a tax on to tourists that come to visit. Like, I would much rather people that come to Costco. No, but I'm saying, but people that utilize Costco will be picking up some of that burden.
Sure, no, I don't. The system is unfair. I just know that.
The levy would only be on residents.
So I'm just gonna say this, I was part of, uh, the statewide. Multi hundred thousand dollar. Focus groups, we did, I was part of the committee that did the, the property tax reform discussion. Around the state for LLC last year and it was very clear all across the state that sales tax of any type. When you still have property taxes in place and income taxes, people hate it. They just won't go for it. And if you look at what they did in Cannon Beach, it was by one vote that it passed. And that's in a community that generally doesn't hurt for funds compared to, I shouldn't say the community, I should say. The demographics there are more well-to-do than they are here in Washington.
But the people, the decision, th- those are smaller businesses in Cannon Beach. We have a lot of big box retail that's here. To me, as a, as a resident, I would much, I don't wanna pay more taxes, but. I would consider the sales tax, especially if I could see how, if it's gonna generate enough to fund. What we actually need and not just put a Band-Aid on this, cause this just feels also like we're. We're chipping away, but we're gonna continuously be asking for more from the community. I think there's gonna be a point when the community is like, you've already asked us for this, we're. Raising the taxes on businesses with the water meters, we're doing the levy, now you want more, it's just like. We need to be able to anticipate and put out a plan. So that people know exactly what the expectations are, cause I don't think we just.
So here's my other question then, because the, the whole reason why we're even in this mess is because the state has capped, you know, permanently set. And basically determine the destinies for cities by saying that your property tax cannot be changed even if all your voters. Decide, so that's why you have to have five-year operation levies or GO bonds. Now, sales tax is always an option. It's not very popular across, uh, the, the state. If you look at other coastal cities, public safety fees, for example, in North Bend ended up with a charter revision, similar to what we got when just talking about selling Tanzi Point. We ended up with a double majority requirement that voters passed with a double majority that prevented us from selling any service, equipment. Or doing any property transaction or leasehold over a hundred thousand dollars in twenty fourteen value. If that's not a direct statement of how people feel about. You know, government expenditures of anything related to that, that's a great indicator. That was recent relatively, so. If you look at North Bend, they got one that says they can't even do fee increases without voter approval. So even if they wanna change utility rates, they gotta go to voter approval. So I, I always say there's a buyer beware statement somewhere in there because that doesn't happen in more than just North Bend too. If we're gonna, the question really becomes, if we, if you go and say, hey, we're gonna give the fire department a sales tax on. Big business, you know, retail, whatever. We know that police is also down quite a bit, half. So then, if I was a voter, what would your logical nexus be? They're talking about that, then the next thing they're gonna do is ask for. A tax increase for police on that, but at the end of the day, you're still paying those, right? So, I just don't think that it would fly. I mean, I, we can put the question after the voters if the commission wants to do it. I just don't think, I think, I think you're gonna end up with more angry voters and distrust the government than you're gonna get in a passage.
And levies are looked at differently than taxes are looked at. And levies are, are, are set for a specific amount of time and the voters then have a chance to come back. Three years, five years, they have an opportunity to come back and say, I don't feel like I got what I wanted for that. I, I think that if you were to impose a tax, especially, uh, one in the community that's so driven by tourism that. That, that, the locals already who have to pay more for gas, more for milk, more for eggs, simply because we live in a tourist town. You know, are gonna feel like they're being punished. But a levy is something, when they look at it, they look at it and say, okay, how does this benefit me? I do agree, we have to clear, draw a very specific. Picture of what you want. Because it's, I've spent my whole life in marketing public relations. And it's all about creating this picture and saying, this is what we want, this is why it benefits you. This is what we wanna bring to this, have, continue in the city. If it's more firefighters, if it's more EMTs, if it's more. Ambulance, your own ambulance service, if it's for housing, whatever it may be. It needs to be a very specific, very clear picture and then you go out and you sell it. Cause you can't just say, this is what we're gonna do and not talk about it. You gotta have firefighters go to community events and have people talk about, you've gotta go out and do your public relations or it will never.
I agree with you on that.
I mean, if there's enough community support that people wanna put it on the ballot, I think that's fine, but I think if the government puts it out on the ballot. Meanwhile, also talking about levies and other things, I just don't see that. I, I've, I mean, I've looked at the numbers. I just don't see that happening. Not in this demographic, not in historical trends.
I would recommend the commission pick one and I will tell you, you know, the Cannon Beach administration has touted the sales tax, but I will tell you. Uh, a majority of that community is still upset about that sales tax passing. It was not, uh, well-received by a majority, even though it passed. And they have since then restricted their GO bonds because they passed a GO bond since then and now they have restricted their charter. So they are seeing some of the consequences of their. Community saying you're, you're overreaching and now we're gonna pull you back. So that can be a, a concern. The unintentional consequences, I think, is what we always try to look ahead to. Where it's like, I, I appreciate the, what you're saying is we want this to go to not on the backs of the taxpayer. But on the backs of those who come and visit, the problem is it's not, it won't be received that way, it'll be received as an additional burden on groceries. That are always very high and that's, that's a challenge.
Come up with some ideas.
We do, and, you know, it's just tough, cause. With Cannon Beach, you know, over fifty percent of their population, and I don't know the facts specifically, is transient. They come from out of town. And so they have a different voter base there. Um, I can see somebody from Portland owning a house in Cannon Beach not wanting another tax and they're, you know, commute their vacation over. I could see it. And maybe I'm only seeing this one side, but I just see that the opportunity is there and that we should at least put it out. With a question to the community saying, would you support this or what are your thoughts, you know? Is that something that we could at least do?
I, 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 well, go ahead, Commissioner Mitchell.
I was saying, with the bond passed for the fairgrounds. It was the unincorporated, was Astoria, it was warranted that passed it. Cannon Beach voted no, Sea Side voted no. But it no. But the population bases were high enough because of all the second. But the population bases were high enough because of all the secondary homes in those three communities, that it did not pass those communities. And today it is still those same three entities that continue to push that bond.
And for us a levies five years, and like you said, they could come back and say, no, we don't want anymore. And then what do I do?
I I'll do this so that we can somewhat, I guess, lay the question to rest to a certain extent. If the commission is okay with it, and I I ask that because I know that this is one of those sensitive subjects that can cause a lot of unintended consequences, and I've seen it in a lot of cities. It's just asking a question can cause its own levels of vitriol and controversy. But. If commission's okay with it, um, or wants to explore that. I would be willing to hold a community meeting for you to make the case related to what the issue is going with the fire department, outline the funding questions. And. Get the feedback directly from the voter on how they feel about that stuff before you even go down that path. We'll even know if we got some support for a levy. But I think there needs to be multiple options on that. I'd be happy to do that town hall at some point, um, if if that's the question. But I I will say that I have a very sneaking suspicion you're gonna get a very clear answer on no on sales tax.
But I think it'd be at least good to get community buy-in, develop more relationships with the community and the the fire staff, like. Last year at the block party, July fourth, like that's. When we, when we weave that fabric within our community, that's really important and just having public buy-in is important and. I, I think that's a great idea.
If anything, it's it's an opportunity to sell the operations levy, a little bit more, get public informed on that. But um, and it can lay this question to rest, at least for this community, so to speak. If that's okay with you, if that, if that's okay with the commission. All right, so we'll work together on getting a schedule for that.
Yeah, I would love the opportunity. Um, I appreciate comments and.
Because I mean, if there's some sort of ground swell support, I didn't, you know, that, you know, surprising, then obviously that's a different direction, right? So. But I think what you'll need to do, you know, we'll, we'll work together to to figure out what that that's gonna look like, but we'll, we'll schedule it, so. This was a discussion item, so there's no action on our part. I think you've got some direction, but also at the same time, we're gonna be having a community meeting here soon, so.
Okay.
And for clarity, um, it was a discussion item, you're correct. Um, we'll kind of wait and see what the community says regarding um. In a town hall regarding either their levy or tax, do you still want us to continue though forward with the meter or do you want to wait till the town hall and that as?
I don't think we need to wait on the meters.
Okay, that's, that was my understanding, but I want.
Go ahead.
Okay, okay.
I think it's, we should still talk about it at the town hall and discuss like all the opportunities and like the challenges with. How money is put towards these essential services so people have a better understanding of coming up with solutions, but. We need to act now, like this is a crisis, I would say.
And just since we got you up there before we let you go.
Sure.
You had made a presentation several months ago about um the EMS service. Can you tell us more about? Where are we at with that?
Yeah.
For the record.
So.
Are we in a better relationship with medics? Do we feel like we still need to stand one up? What's the story?
We're, in a, in a, I would say somewhat better relationship, but we're now seeing uh delays again. Um, they just, their general manager just resigned. Um, so. Uh, I don't want to paint this bad picture of ambulance company, but I feel that there's some decline. We've seen quite a few. Few more delayed responses. Um, I know their staffing has gone back down again, um, so it's, I don't know if we're on this up and down wave with them or or what, but.
Is our ambulance ready to respond if we want to? What's, what's holding us up from filling in the small back pills?
Yeah, it would be getting uh. An agreement with medics to be able to do that unless we just want to take it from them, but we don't have the staff to do that.
We do not at this time.
No, I'm just saying like the occasional, like what Seaside does sometimes.
Yeah, we could probably occasionally do that in certain times of day, uh, at night might be quite a bit harder, but um. You know. I think there's a, there's some to explore.
I just know that was something that was a big topic. We're talking about adding firefighters, but not necessarily an EMS service, so I'm just trying to.
Sure, and and when I'm, when I talk about firefighters, I'm thinking.
We're talking EMS as well. I I would say from a city manager perspective, we are too short-staffed right now to start relieving that burden for the medics. Um, especially in the summer, but maybe in the fall, there may be a little bit more. Um, as, you know, calls in the summer are the peak.
And that was hopefully getting a new general manager that they'll, we'll see an uptick again and things will go a little bit better for us, so.
All right. Well, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your support and information. Appreciate it.
Thanks for everyone for coming out.
Yeah, absolutely.
And for all you do.
And um, I wanna uh just note, I don't think I've. Seen that many volunteers in the room before, so I really want to appreciate you guys coming out. I'm sure uh. Uh, we'll be having, I'm sure I'll see at the town hall when they come up for that too as well, so. Thank you. That's a Wednesday, Wednesday. Next, we have the shopping cart ordinance.
We save the easiest for last.
Speaking of tailors. So since I have the dais and the mic. I'm full supportive of my brothers and sisters in Red. Uh, with this last topic and moving forward, I just wanted to remind the commission. Uh, our operating levy passed in November twenty twenty-three, so it goes until twenty twenty-nine. Jessica and I were looking it up back there. Um, I got hired in October of twenty twenty or twenty zero eight. And it had just failed in the May election and they were just coming out. So when I came in, Bob said, hey, you gotta get working on uh public. Uh, support of this levy, and we totally changed it. We dropped out all the equipment, we just made it personnel. And the twenty-four hour coverage was not only a goal of the commission at the time, but was uh very important to um. The community, so just when you guys do look at that, you'll find those, those key points that are gonna be, they're gonna be supportive or. Or what the community wants and um and then timing. So failed in May, went back out in November, same thing. If it fails in November, go back. You know, it's all gonna be that timing thing and you're right, you want to hit it when uh there's not something else going on. And you gotta think, uh, we were originally going fifty-two cents. Per thousand, changed to twenty-eight cents in two thousand and eight, November passed, and we stayed that way until. Twenty twenty-three, we raised it to thirty-four cents and we were scared to do that and just for Commissioner Salasio's. Um, this community is really interesting in that I was told when I got here that no matter what you do, twenty-five percent are going to not support any type of. Anything that's going to change uh any kind of taxes or anything like, and that's kind of played out. So anyway, so sorry.
Well, I mean, I mean, just make that point, though, um, the library failed uh recently, and then they had to go back out a second time. And then it wasn't until people realized the library was done for, if it didn't get passed, that people actually went back and voted for it in support.
Take your time to write your um voter's pamphlet stuff and put out that message and instead, and I think we should be upset it tonight. Stay on that message and 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 get it out and stuff.
The uh library did ask for an increase and it was too soon for a lot of the voters, so we went back to the original rate and it's passed.
Shopping carts, so we had this discussion a month ago, June twenty-fourth, I took several notes, uh. City manager and I and provided them to legal, and so she kind of rewrote the whole ordinance or a large part of it. Um, kind of go in a different direction, so we decided that we need to have another discussion on this because there are some. Um, vast changes and stuff. So uh presented before you the changes and I, I hope your copy has the highlights on it of what. Was changed and stuff like that. And going away from the punitive citation um fine type. To more of a fee based, and it's not a fee that that we're like the fees we were just discussing to where you, everybody has to pay it. It's more of a um, a fee if you don't comply. So and then you also, you get so many. You're not picking up your shopping carts like you should, et cetera, et cetera, and so that it 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 graduates up. Um, and there, and then one of the things that they, that uh the legal told us was. Uh, it is very hard, and this is from her experience and from the 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 legal's experience. That uh to get large corporations to comply with any of this stuff. And so you have to do it in such a way that kind of encourages that. Compliance and stuff. There was talk of liens and things like that. We went away from doing that type of situation. But this is what she finally came up with, um, and we decided to come before you and and have a discussion. Uh, we're gonna do our best, um, city manager and I to answer questions. Some of them may be for legal though, and we may have to um. Loop them in again, and we'll just want to see, gauge where you guys are at on on looking at this. Definitely signage, everybody's gonna have to comply with that. We resolved the phone number thing, we don't, they don't have to go purchase a. Um, an eight hundred number and have them each for their different business. We'll do the one with the phone tree and the reporting. And um I did talk to Christian, I'm sorry, um, code compliance officer, Christian Solinas. And he told me that he's got, it's gone way down to what he's had to pick up for carts. Um, since he was at his peak, I think that really has to do with the contractor that Walmart hired. That they are getting out there and that we're just seeing them occasionally. I've been very sensitive, watching for them and seeing where. Carts are showing up and I haven't seen as much of a problem, although I did see a couple that uh we don't normally see like um. Harbor Freight, there was a cart way off, way over by um Rite Aid and stuff, and I was like. That's odd that that's over there, but anyway, so.
No, when you say way down, I mean, I remember hearing reports of like one hundred and twenty-six, hundred and fifty-six carts that he was picking up.
Yeah.
There, but like, what, what are we talking about in terms of?
So in February, his number was a hundred and thirty-four. It shocked me that he had returned a hundred and thirty-four carts or went and picked up. And he started in um fall of two thousand and twenty-four. So um. Recently, he didn't give me numbers, but hit his quote way down, and he says, yeah, I don't. I'm not going out and picking up carts every day like I was before. It's just occasionally and um. And so part of this ordinance was to keep that in there that if the business wanted, I mean, and we have the capacity to do so. I was worried about capacity, that there's no way, it'd be his, almost his full-time job would be going around picking up shopping carts. If we stayed on the same rate that we were of, you know, um, a hundred and thirty-four divided by six months is whatever. Uh, math-wise, and so um. He says it's not like that right now.
And I would agree with that. I was also picking up some of the carts uh before Christian started and and when he was first starting. Um, there's a couple that are always on um Harbor Drive, but uh since Christian started and then just recently, I have not seen as many as well. So I would agree with that statement. I mean, there's still some, I mean, there's one right now outside of the old Joann Fabrics, but some of those are those recurring. So um, so.
And to be clear, that those carts, um, the business is not prosecuting for theft.
At this time.
At this time of the people that are offending, because that's the reason why we have so many carts, is because basically people know they can just take them, they're running off with them, there's really no. And if, and if the owner doesn't, or the ostensible owner does not charge, there is no crime committed in the eyes of the law, correct?
Correct. So we have um a handful of businesses that have told us if. They would support a citation if we caught somebody with a cart off their property. And then others have not be, now that's because the locals may want to. But because of corporate restrictions, they can't do that. They have to get approval from corporate to do any type of prosecution. Uh, some of them have, like TJ Maxx can't even prosecute shoplifters.
Right. And as much, and as much as, as much as I would say that's, you know, that's that's business's problem, it just encourages more theft across the board, so it's not something that can be just isolated to that.
It, it does set an atmosphere for more theft, yeah.
Some of the shift as well from the last time was the discussion around those that are fully in compliance and not penalizing them along with everyone else. And so that is why some of the shift you see in this was based on, we know of at least, I think, five businesses that really don't have any carts that. Get stolen or taken away, they actively track them down, you know, so the question was, would they, we. Compel them to do everything like they are basically being bad neighbors when they are already doing a good job. Um, so the question comes down to, you know, is it more about penalizing or is it about compliance and encouraging the the good behavior? Um, but then when we have to enforce it.
Yeah, I guess speaking of that, does having each business post a sign on the shop, shopping cart create an onerous? Experience for the business?
So I wouldn't think the the signage would create that, it's just um whether or not. Um, it's because the signage just says, if you remove the shopping cart, you're in violation of this.
Oh, no, that's on every shopping cart.
Oh, so uh that's the other thing is that um they kind of gave us an out that if if if. We do the graduated thing and um the the carts themselves, it could be any kind of sticker. Now, obviously, if you do a sticker. It's not gonna last if a cart gets offside. We're more concerned with the signage onsite that says if you leave, and then I, the one thing that I didn't get clarified. Is um if they agree to this, can we put language or say that you will prosecute? In there, and I don't know because that's chronic crossing the line of you get to be a victim if you don't want it, because if someone steals from you, you don't have to prosecute them.
Yeah, I'm not sure how that's enforceable legally.
I don't know that it's legally enforceable and that was.
I mean, it'd be ideal because then we could actually go after the people who steal it.
Yes.
We have had already one comment from a business, I believe it was Costco, that said it would be a hardship for them to label every single shopping cart. Because they have hundreds, so that is very costly.
But you know, uh, you're saying there could be a sticker, so that's not a hundred bucks for, oh, sorry, I used to, no, no. Uh, a hundred, you know, it doesn't take much to print stickers and it doesn't take much to replace them either.
I don't know, but then. Gross on the cart, it's like a whole thing, like.
Doesn't Costco have the red kid flap there on the seat that already says Costco on it?
I mean, they printed on there, but yeah. But I I would just say this, um, I think that if we put forward um. A. I think if the store prosecutes, then there probably, we could incentivize that with a credit or some sort of way to then say. Because I think the issue that rubs a lot of people raw about this issue in total is that it's not going after, it's going after a business who is being stolen from. Versus the theft itself, if that makes any sense.
So you're saying that you you want to incentivize them to prosecute?
Yeah.
Uh, my problem with that is if we incentivize them to prosecute, we're sort of pushing them along. You know, our, I think, I, I think the goal is, is that shopping carts are gonna be left alongside the roadways in the community. If we're going to implement a fine to those people who leave the shopping carts, that is really as far as we can go. We can go to say, hey, your shopping cart's available, come pick up your shopping cart. If you don't come it, there'll be a fine. I like your escalator of of. Of of about how many more, if you don't so many times, but I think it's up to them as a corporation. Whether or not their policy is for us to impede or to push them to prosecute really isn't with our purview.
But I also think that there's not just all court, these aren't all corporate stores either.
But it's not our purview, no matter what size you are, to say, we, we're gonna, we want you to prosecute. If they're gonna take it. Okay, your responsibility is to come pick it up. And for you then to decide if we see somebody with it, for you to come and and decide if you want to prosecute somebody who's. Who's been caught doing it. But I don't think we should be going forward, trying to to make laws that that really. I don't think that's what this was ever about. This was about, what do we do with shopping carts that are sitting alongside the roadway? Do we get rid of those shopping carts and instead of having code enforcement handle that, how do we get? Um, the the businesses to take responsibility for them sitting out there and then coming back and saying, if you don't take care of y- your property. This is what it's gonna cost you. If you wish to prosecute. Fine, there's a law for that.
Yeah, because it is also an issue of of these businesses not grabbing carts during a storm and then they're blowing into the road. So like, you can't prosecute someone for that. But the business should do a better job of maintaining their equipment and hire someone to bring carts in, like, that is their responsibility.
If somebody like Costco could do exactly what Walmart's doing, hire a company, go pick up your, your, your stuff. Every other city that I've ever been to, it has a. Has especially large, they have a co- a company that they contract with to go do this. But I don't think that the the cities are are enforcing or trying to convince the force of law to to prosecute. Not that I don't agree that it's not theft, but it's just.
So one of the main questions is, this pivot in this part of the discussion tonight is, is this going the path you would like as a whole? Or do you want it to go back toward the more punitive? But this was kind of what the legal had recommended based on our past discussion.
Mitch Pope.
I think it looks good. I would be um open to increasing the the fees per violation, the fifty dollar per fee and a hundred dollar per violation, I think, could be increased, especially. But these big businesses, they can afford it. And then the only concern that I have is the ability to implement putting aside on each shopping cart. The timeline for implementation, our expectations for when that will be completed. I just, I don't have a clear picture of what that would look like, and I don't know if it's fair to business owners to not have. Clear expectations for that aspect of the code, so that would be my only concern.
Mitch Mitchell.
Uh, I agree that I think that you've done a great job putting this together. I I I think what you have here makes sense and. And this is a spirit of what was originally planned.
And I'll just close it with saying, um, I think this is closer to uh what we want to do. I still have an issue related, I mean, to me, it's. I still have an issue related, I mean, to me, it's not so much the, I mean, yes, there's the issue of carts that are safety hazard and all that, but I think to me, the like the societal issue that I like care more about is the fact that is the theft aspect, and I would prefer to see the thief be prosecuted um than the person that's stolen from, so to speak. And 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 I know that we have a lot of conversations around big businesses, but I also know that there's shopping carts used by smaller businesses, sometimes personally owned. Um, and there's also businesses we don't know that will yet someday come into a place in our community. And I'm just trying to think of the law of unintended consequences to that. So um, but I think this is good to go forward for a a public hearing. Um, and we can duke it out there, but uh for as a discussion item, in terms of where we're at, sounds like we have a majority to go forward with. Commissioner Pope.
Yeah, what?
A couple of them are not houseless, though. We have one gentleman who keeps taking it, and he just gets a ride across the road. So he he takes it across from Joann Fabrics, hitches a ride and dumps the cart there, and he he lives in a house.
Okay, I see that too, but I just came alongside the road a lot of times parked into the road.
Yeah.
Most of them, where I see more of the bag going across the causeway.
Yeah. I I would say it's an equal mix of folks in our town that don't see it as theft.
It's not the third thing, as you might think it.
You know, taking it to the bus stop or whatever, and and so just make it.
I mean, I mean, I'm I'm not trying to belay the point. I'm, that's, I'm just stating my point as the end, as the endpoint. Um, I think it's good to go from what we hear to move forward towards uh an ordinance.
And and your number for that six months was twenty-two shopping carts a month.
A little under one a day.
That's down from a hundred and thirty-six, but yeah, but still. So, all right, well, if there's any other further discussion related to this item, we'll move on to go the order. Mr. Mitchell, let's kick it off with you.
I don't have anything else to add. I I think I'm good.
All right, Mr. Salasio.
Um, for the community garden, for people that want to sign up, what is there information on the website or?
We are not that there yet. We're in the process of working through to see if we have somebody that can manage it as a volunteer. Once I have that, we will absolutely say, you know, we're starting to sign up people for plots. I've had somebody contact us already, and if they do, I do just take their names. But at this time, it's not like I can assign a plot or um, and I think there'll be plenty um for the people that are interested. So uh we're working on it. I'm very close, um, but we just have to finalize some details with the volunteer before we start advertising.
Mr. Pope. Mr. Mitchell?
Just a quick question for the city manager. In Hammond Center Road, um, you have all the trees with the fences around it. They're mowing the grass, but not the grass that's growing in where the trees are at.
We need to get a weed eater out there.
Because it's starting to really look kind of shabby there.
Yeah.
Um, my only go the order question would be, um, a while ago, it had been discussed, it was months, um, about potholes um in the city. And the public works um having a sort of lists and action items, and I'm just trying to figure out, only because I've seen some highlighted, they've been spray painted. I don't know if we did it or somebody else did it. Um, in city right of ways, and I've confirmed they're in city right of ways, uh potholes, and I'm just curious where we're at in those patching and uh, you know, how many are we left on the on the on the docket? I noticed our public works director left, so.
I can have the public works director follow up at the next meeting. Um, we do still, I believe, have the form on our website if somebody wants to fill it out, if they see a pothole that isn't tagged like that. Um, assume it probably hasn't been seen. Um, I I don't know off the cuff where they're at in that process, but they should be filling them as they come up. But they, I know in the past, the protocol has been usually once there's like three to five, then they go out and do them all at once, but now's a good time, probably.
Yeah, my understanding was that they just kept a list and then summertime hit, they did him. So I'm just, um, I know this has been highlighted for months, and so I'm just trying to see where we're at in the list.
I will follow up with the public works director.
I have one more thing.
Wow, this is the, this is the second, all right.
Um, I want to congratulate the city manager on getting, finishing her masters.
Yeah.
Force work. Um, I feel like that's a large accomplishment, and so the masters in public administration is is yours. And I think it's gonna add a lot of value to our city and appreciate your commitment to furthering your education to improve. Thanks for all of us. So congratulations.
Absolutely, and you got a pretty high, high, high marks if I remember right.
Always.
Yep.
Four point oh.
All right, well, with that, anything for the go the order, city manager, city recorder? All right, with that, we're gonna adjourn this meeting. Thank you all.